Good afternoon, Jeff. How are the streets of Lexington today?
So far, so good. Day's not quite over with.
Fair enough. I figure with BMI winning the Southern Conference Championship, things may have gotten a little wild over the weekend.
I was in Hampton the weekend, so I missed whatever went on.
Very good. Your former school came out on top and as you probably know, we're playing James Madison this weekend in Harrisonburg.
Correct. We'll see how that one goes.
Indeed.
Wish him the best.
Been a long time since we've had much to talk about with BMI football, so it's somewhat exciting.
Very true. Nice to have a home team to root for.
Indeed. We got about another minute. David was going to be joining late. Marilyn's on here. So are you expecting anybody else from staff? Jim?
Jake is with us, I believe, but no, that's just Jeff, Jake and myself.
Not just. Well, we'll go ahead and get started since we have everybody we're expecting and anyone joining from the public, we will welcome them. On the pay of the Rockbridge Report, Debbie and I all students are on spring break, so I'm not sure they're covering this week or not. But our agenda provides overview and discussion of the proposed fiscal year 22 operating budget. But I anticipate there are also some questions on the capital improvement budget, so that's not off limits. But I will open it up and see what questions or Jim, do you have anything from questions, issues, follow up?
Mr. Mayor, there were a few questions at the last session that Jake and I wanted to elaborate on, and we did get some council members asked questions between then and now. So we wanted to assure them with the group. Jake, you want to lead off on that school funding issue?
Sure, Jim. Thanks. Well, good evening, everyone. One of the issues I think that was brought up or potentially some questions at our last work session, joint work session with the school board about the schools projected ADM and the no loss funding and how, you know, all that was budgeted for next year. So just to give an answer on that, in talking with Tommy Roberts, who does finances for the schools, it's my understanding that the school has based their budget and their state revenues on an ADM of 620. Now, there will be no loss funding that's anticipated for FY22. And the budgeted amount of that no loss funding is approximately $142,000 that they're projecting to receive in FY22. So those funds serve to essentially make the schools revenue whole and bring them up to their pre-COVID ADM, which in March of 2020 was 656. So their budget is based on 620 and they anticipate no loss funding to come in as a new revenue for FY22 to bring their ADM up to 656. And so if their actual ADM is higher than 620, when they get their first official number in later in the fiscal year, they anticipate that that no loss funding will be less. So essentially, the no loss funding they receive is just going to make them whole and bring them up to 656. Their ADM is higher, less no loss funding, their ADM were somehow lower than 620, which I don't think they anticipate they would receive a greater share of no loss funding. So just wanted to provide some update on how that was being budgeted for FY22.
Thank you, Jake. Members of council, have any questions? Jake, just to affirm what I heard you say for fiscal year 22, the coming year, there's a guarantee by the state for 656.
That's correct. They will receive no loss funding to get them to an ADM of 656, what they would lose in revenue.
In 21, they also received a no loss funding of 656.
That's correct.
So if we end up with 660 students, we'd get nothing, but anything between 656 and below to our budget 620, we would get some compensation.
That's exactly correct.
It just doesn't sound too good to be true for the coming year, but thank you. It's good to reaffirm that.
Jake, one of the other questions we had, Mr. Mayor, was about the five-year CIP funding. I think Leslie brought that up. Jake, do you want to try and elaborate a little bit on that? I don't know that you have something to put on the screen?
Sure, I can elaborate on it and then I can put something on the screen as well if need be, but so our five-year CIP projection. You know, we now have the new project from the schools with Floyd SK, and that's, you know, $735,000 is our projected cost share. From all the information we have, that is likely going to be financed through a bond issue from the county if this ultimately does go through next year. So, you know, our cost share of the 735,000 will be spread out over a 20, 25, 30-year period in the form of debt service payments, our share of those payments. So for the purposes of the CIP, I know we'll capture the project there and put it on our horizon, but in actuality, if it's financed and we pay a debt service cost share, that funding won't come from capital funding that won't come out of our CIP fund. That would instead be absorbed by the school fund's budget on the cost share that they pay the high school. So we'll still have to compensate for that additional annual amount in the operating budget, but it won't be anything that's impacting our CIP funds, capital project funds that we have. So I just wanted to make that clarification. And then also, you know, the big thing hanging out there with City Hall renovations, we're scheduled to, and the CIP and FY23 have a little bit of funding for preliminary study and to get some information on the available space in City Hall and what we can feasibly do with a little bit more allocated in FY24 for design costs. And then ultimately, the project roughly $3.6 million, I believe, is scheduled in FY25. So that's obviously a very big project. You know, we do have the cash available in our construction or our capital fund, fund balance and anticipated revenues that we would contribute from the general fund. If we paid it all in cash, I think we have the amount to cover as we project it over the five-year term. Obviously, that's what we may not do. If we ultimately go forward with the project, we may consider financing for a project of that size. And again, those payments would then be absorbed by the operating budget. It wouldn't be a capital expense, a one-time cash capital expense. So I think it's good to look on the horizon and see where these projects are, but ultimately, how we decide to finance them will impact the funding source and whether it's an operational expense or capital expense upfront. So just wanted to provide some clarity on that. And also just to touch on the utility fund, CIP, as you're all aware, we've kind of flip-flopped the plan from what was originally slated. So we're pursuing financing now in summer of 22, so the beginning of FY22, sorry, summer of 21, beginning of FY22 to finance the Diamond Hill Phase 1 project and instead pay the Jackson Phase 1 project for the next year out of fund balance. So flipping those projects. We did this, obviously, because we're projecting not enough cash balance at the end of FY21 in order to pay the Diamond Hill project totally out of fund balance. So we decided to pursue financing at this time for the project, since the project cost estimate went from $4.2 million to $5.4 and now $5.8 million. So that greatly exceeds our estimates for cash on hand. And, you know, looking at the long-term projections, we'll continue to need to, at least on our end for setting rates, have an additional 3% margin for ongoing capital expenses, you know, as we move forward into the years ahead. So just wanted to provide some update on that, and I can certainly answer any other questions and provide some graphic details on the screen if anybody would like to discuss further.
On the CIP cash flow that you put together, and thank you. That's really, for me, it's helpful to see how we're going to fund all these projects. But it'd be pre-COVID, we were budgeting 1.1 million a year out of the general fund, and, you know, that changed with COVID. And so for FY22, where the general fund is contributing 530,000, and then the next year, 1.8 million. Why the big jump? And is that, yeah, why is it being done like that rather than making it even each year?
So the purpose behind that was to give us a little bit of relief in our operating budget this year. So instead of having a larger amount of contribution from the general fund, we know at this stage that we're going to have a pretty significant amount of FY20 carryover left over. And that will obviously have a forthcoming recommendation possibly in May to utilize some of that towards capital. And additionally, in FY21, in the current fiscal year, we have contributions to the capital fund in excess of projects. So I think we cut our capital projects in FY21 down to almost nothing, a very small amount over what was programmed. And we've contributed 735,000 throughout the fiscal year. So we'll have at least $600,000 in my estimation, possibly a little bit more of excess contributions in this fiscal year to go toward capital projects for next year that were deferred or to cover new projects that were cut in FY21. So between that and the anticipated carryover that we'll have remaining that we would propose to put toward capital, I think FY22 presents an opportunity to give some relief to our operating budget as COVID revenues continue to bounce back. Obviously, we're forecasting a big improvement in FY22, but not all the way back to where we were pre-COVID. You know, our revenues that we're forecasting are actually less than what we had in FY18, I believe. So probably we anticipate it will take a few years to get our growth back up to where it was pre-COVID. And this is an opportunity to get some capital projects done this year with available funding. We wouldn't like to defer capital projects again this year. I think two years would be too long. So it gives us an opportunity to get a lot accomplished this year.
Thank you.
Does anyone have a crystal ball as to the MSA and the capital projects that are forthcoming there in the next 12, 24, 36 months?
Jeff and I have sat in on some recent MSA meetings, and Jeff may have some sort of information to share. I know they're completing a long-term capital improvement study. And I don't know, Jeff, you may have some input on that and where they stand with that.
I haven't seen either the draft reports for the water or the wastewater plant. I've heard that some of the recommendations for the water in draft phase only were upwards of $10 million in projects. I haven't heard anything on the sewer plant.
And so that just concerns me when we already are projecting, you know, what we're spending our utility money on, whether it be Jackson or Diamond Hill or whatever, where we could be staring down millions of dollars in those costs. So I just, to keep that on everyone's mind, because once again, those improvements have to be made most likely. And I guess the only way that we can alleviate the pressure on our current water customers is to add more water customers.
In our experience with the already stated rate increases from MSA won't cover these new projects at all. That's going to, all that money's on top of these almost 10% annual rate increases. Well, it doesn't take long to start talking about real money, as some people have said.
It's an incredible concern of mine, the rates that our citizens are paying now compared to five years ago and what they'll be paying five years from now. And that's something that is usually an afterthought a little bit during our budget process. And it's just, I can't stress that enough right now. And so I realize, you know, the good guidance and everything from our team, and I'm glad that you guys are a part of some of the talks at the MSA, but please keep us informed and so we can keep everyone in Lexington informed of what's coming down the road.
Certainly.
It will certainly continue to be a surprise to people when they get their water bills, but as much groundwork as we can do preparing them for these changes, especially our large customers who bear the biggest burden with the universities and the hospital with our reverse volume discount, if you will, but volume penalty.
Another item that came up, and I wanted to spend a little time and elaborate very short period of time, is we talked about Friends of Rockford Swimming, whether that's discretionary or non-discretionary. At a certain level, it really doesn't matter, but if you stop and think about it, we could decide to close the pool and end the swimming program. So we don't have to fund that. We cannot shut down social services and decide not to fund it. So that, you know, to me, that's the cutting point, if you will, or cutting edge is that truly that is discretionary for swimming. But, you know, we couldn't shut down social services or Department of Health or PDC, any of that kind of stuff, any more than, you know, just couldn't do it. And they do provide it. It is a service the city provides, but nonetheless, it is discretionary, just like any other service that we provide to a certain extent.
Not recommending that we terminate it or the pool, but just in case anybody's listening out there, just want to just pointing out the difference between the organizations. There's, we're proud of the relationship with Forest Swimming and the annual contribution that we've agreed to make for them to operate and provide the services for our citizens.
Excellent catch, sir. We don't intend to cut anything.
Never know who's going to be listening or what they'll hear.
Right. And Jake had a little information back to the cemetery fund, the investments there we wanted to share with you, Jake.
Yes, so I believe that came up at our last budget work session on the cemetery trust fund and the performance of that fund. You know, our revenues, revenue line in the general fund that we see for cemetery investment incomes, obviously, you know, a little bit less this coming year. So without, you know, getting too big of a discussion on this, obviously, this is a big picture item that will need further discussion on how we'd like to handle the investment of the trust fund. But just to kind of recap, you know, our trust fund portfolio, it's invested and managed by SunTrust Bank, now Truist Bank, there's really two components to the fund. There's the capital appreciation of the fund, so the buying and selling of securities and assets in the fund. And that's performed quite well over the last year, really. The fund is appreciated and is close to $1.6 million market value right now. So the assets in the fund continue to appreciate. The issue that we run into is the dividend and interest income portion of the fund. So the underlying securities that produce dividend and interest income that is, you know, dispersed to the city and we receive as revenue, that's the part that's really suffered. You know, bond yields are very low, the assets in there that produce dividend income aren't performing exceptionally well. And when you factor in the $15,000 annual account management fee that we currently pay, that takes a big chunk out of the revenue that we receive, the income that we receive from the fund. So I do think it's a conversation worth having down the road as maybe we get further into FY22 and look at how the market is performing and decide if we want to make some changes to the investments of that fund. You know, right now with income-producing investments not performing exceptionally well, I think it's good that the capital is appreciating still and that should continue to do so over the next year. But, you know, I think it would be worthwhile looking at down the road, maybe some adjustments to the assets in that fund, the allocations of that fund, whether it would be more heavily skewed towards growth or income, as well as look at that account management fee. And, you know, that's something we could discuss with SunTrust or potentially look into some other financial institutions as well and see what products and services they may offer and the fees that they would ask for those services. So just wanted to give a little bit more information on the cemetery incomes. I know that question comes up from time to time.
Other question?
Yeah, I was going to say, without getting bogged down on it, my perception in, most recently, looking over a March 31 statement is that they're charging a flat $15,000 as opposed to a 1% fee. So our cost is static from that standpoint. I was concerned that it seems it's straight back to 60-40, where we had, I thought council had directed it to be more heavily weighted in equities, especially as low as rates are on bonds. And then one question that's never, I've never been able to find an answer to of this trust, what was the original corpus that the city started with theoretically? When we look back at the purpose, that corpus can't be invaded, but some of the other could be if we had some projects at the cemetery that we wanted to pursue, and we need that information. So we can get together on preparation for future conversations, but I think that's very important. And then going back, the purpose of this particular trust fund, arguably, the city, it's nice to have income from it, but it certainly isn't necessary at this point. Or maybe it's a strategic decision by city council not to take income from it at this point.
That's correct. And I do have a, and this, again, I can provide more information on a later date, but the auditors did produce a corpus amount for the cemetery trust fund. I don't have the documentation on where they got that number or how they arrived at it, but I'll get some more information from our auditors and provide that to you all since now we're beginning on FY21 audit already. So I'll see what information I can provide.
Thank you, sir.
I think, you know, we've been talking about the cemetery funds for years and saying we might do something and, you know, a strategic change could yield an extra $15,000, $20,000 or $30,000 to our budget. And that might be well worth some time to do. And so I really hope that maybe this is a situation where the finance committee has a role or to get this moving, because if we chase it down and we decide that we're happy with the way that it is, that's great. But if we also chase it down and we help the budget a little bit and the amount that we're subsidizing the cemetery operations right now, about over two pennies on the tax rate, I believe subsidized the cemetery's operations, if we can provide any relief, that might be a good thing.
We'll look at following up. I appreciate it.
Speaking of cemetery and the budget, do we expect to have trustees helping? Or are they now helping due to COVID? Just kind of, I know that was some labor.
They are not helping now. Obviously, things are getting better. And the jail's hoping to get some of those folks out later in the summer. They've actually got a VDOT crew going out probably June 1st or in June. And as soon as they get the transportation, they'll bring out some of the other folks. Problem is today, they've got to transport and be much more careful about how they did it than in the past.
Thank you.
And I can add to that. I think we're setting up a meeting in the next two to three weeks with the jail. And that trustee program may be accelerated for Public Works.
They certainly intend to. It's just a matter of, yes, can we put the pieces together? Everybody still there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Points that you wanted to make, Jim?
One other thing is we discussed the surplus last time, and a few of you folks were surprised. And Jake explained that annually, there's a $120,000 payment from the utility fund that goes to the general fund. And of course, by definition, that is a surplus because that goes into fund balance. It's not spent during the fiscal year. The remaining funds we have available, about 133,000. My intention was that there are a number of projects out there that city council has been interested in that on my screen, I wouldn't want to make a recommendation necessarily. I think you, as elected officials in the community, can decide you want to do anything with skate park. Do you want to do anything more with Evergreen Cemetery or Jordan's Point Park or Kids Place? All very valid things to work on, but I don't really have, from a management standpoint or administrative standpoint, some type of measurement stick to say which one's most important to you and to the community. So I thought that money could be available if council wanted to use that for some of those projects and make that available to you based on what you're hearing, what your input is from the community. So that was my intention there, just FYI. It's available. We can leave it. If you want to just leave it, it'll go into fund balance at the end of the year. But you've got a chance to put a few more of those small capital projects into the budget, should you desire.
I did have one suggestion before we spend all that money. After talking with the schools and the teachers are slated to end up getting a 5% raise and the county is doing, having a 3% raise in their budget this year, I would like for us to consider bumping up our raise to our employees somewhere between 2.5 to 3% to be comparable to those other groups. And they deserve it, but to have a real measure, I think since we're giving, since the locality is responsible for half of the school increase, though we end up getting more than half because that's only for SOQ positions that the state funds. So I think anywhere between a 2.5 to 3% increase total would be comparable. And Jake can tell you what the difference would be.
Yeah, so just looking at what a half percent would be, just for the general fund, all general fund employees, that would roughly be $24,300. And again, if we, obviously, we extend that for budget planning to the three organizations for whom we're fiscal agents, so central dispatch, RARO and tourism. There'd be a little bit of a cost share factored in there. I would There'd be a little bit of a cost share factored in there. I would say no more than a few thousand dollars. Given our cost share for those organizations is somewhat low overall. So I would say a half percent's probably going to be no more than $30,000, somewhere in the vicinity of 28, 29,000 for one half percent.
So we could get to 3% with $60,000.
That's correct. Yes.
Okay, I, 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 I would agree with Leslie. I think that that might be a really good thing to do this year when we have, we have the funds to do it because we might not next year.
That's a great suggestion. Just did the county provide a thousand dollar bonus? Hey, you know, I know Buena Vista provided something to their employees. So we provide the thousand dollars that for some, you know, and then would there be any consideration? I know Dennis just said, since we have the money, but then of course the challenge is we have to have them every year for the rest of time. So would we consider how we've done in a few years where we are very cautious? And of course, we're coming out of a pandemic to, to do a 100% bonus in addition to a 2% raise. Just to think, so that, just to be very cautious. And then as you recall, we've done that in the past and then we made that permanent. Actually, we, we, when we were, felt better about our finances. So I just, I just bring that up for consideration. Just so that we've got the whole picture. Because I'm always cautious comparing ourselves to other jurisdictions. If, if they didn't provide the bonus, we provided $1,500 to uniformed personnel and $1,000, I think to everyone else. And I'm not sure that was done everywhere.
Well, their uniformed folks in the county, I know, did get a pretty substantial bonus. I can't recall right off the top of my head what they did for the other employees, frankly.
And that's not a deciding factor. It's just for context. To, to, we want to not have our employees slide backwards at all, you know, cost of living and so forth. But just for context, for, for, since we're trying to be responsible and so on.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the county did further employees did a bonus last year, but a bonus is a bonus. You know, it's not an ongoing thing, so a bonus last year doesn't affect this year. It's still a good thing to do. It was a great thing to do at the time and I'm not belittling it by any means. But I still would like to increase that percentage.
Your recommendation where the budget provides for a 2% increase for all city employees. You'd like to see that perhaps at 3%, which would be roughly $60,000?
Yes.
And, and I would agree with that.
Anyone have any strong objections?
And beyond that, I, I would say if we're looking for another larger project that's been on our on, on the horizon for us, one that I think we all agree, we need to at some point get started on is Jordan's Point. So if we have funds, that might be something that we can start some work on.
Well, we've got the $54,000 for Jordan's Point already in the budget, right?
Correct, correct.
And so we haven't picked the projects to even spend that 54 on. I think Dennis is exactly right. I mean, but we got to know what we're spending money on.
I'm thinking 54 is not going to get us very far.
A little bit of gravel.
Right, that which they beef that up. And can I just ask, the skate park, it was not included in the budget? It was just the, our regular park money is in there.
Correct, correct. We just have regular park money that we spend on the various parks. Nothing was allocated specifically for the skate park. Frankly, that came in very, very late to our, you know, into the process, if you will. We'd already made the decisions and there wasn't 25 or $30,000 that seemed ready to just put into that project. Again, not hearing anything from you or anybody else from the community up until a month ago.
So right now, we take care of eight parks in the city, right? We have eight parks and we've spent, what, $125,000 at Waddell a couple of years ago with the schools? And then Richardson Park between the pavilion and the new playset was what, 50, 60, 70,000 total? In the last, so in the last two to three years, we've put, what, a quarter of a million dollars probably into our parks between our regular upgrades because one year, Dr. Ramey asked us to up the 15 to, I think, 25 or 50 for parking. I mean, we've, so I get concerned that, you know, the park on Taylor Street or the park in Fair Winds or the park Limekill, that one's used every day, the one at Limekill by all the kids that walk back and forth. And so I know we've got a lot of parks and of course, the, the poor swimming folks at times have talked about a better use of that space up there in their eyes. So I, I think we want to be really careful and have a good plan with our parks. And, and not, I'd love to have a better plan long term.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. You know, the skateboard park, I, I mean, we did hear an admirable proposal. However, longer term, I, I wonder if that space could be better utilized for more people in our community if it were, I don't know, a half of it were the skate park and the other half were pickleball courts or something that, that, you know, that, and that's something that I think RARO would be great to oversee. And it would be something that our older community would be interested in. And it's difficult because the universities are getting a little tougher with using their tennis courts, for instance. We have no, we have no commu, you know, city tennis courts. It's just the, the universities. So I, 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 that space isn't big enough for tennis courts, but I think it would be for two pickleball courts, including leaving and improving the, the skate parks that's there. So from my perspective, I, I, I would, like David says, I would like to hold off before we put money into that particular space until we have a good vision for what we want to do with it.
Jeff, what do you have, do you have anything planned specifically for parks this year?
Leslie, we do not, you know, we budgeted more money. The next part we were considering was the one at Limekill that David had mentioned. But nothing, nothing at this moment in particular. I'd have to dust off, I think it's been three years, maybe four years ago. We got budget numbers to what it would take to replace each and every one of our parks. They were, they were pretty steep. So I'd have to dust those off to, to plot a roadmap if we ever wanted to pursue that. Because those numbers are somewhat aged now.
And are there significant issues at Kids Place? I've, I've heard some people say things. I did go look at it a while back and I thought it actually looked pretty good, but, but I don't play on the equipment. I don't know. What, what are the issues at Kids Place?
Well, my opinion, and again, I don't play on it myself, but when I met Ms. Tharp out there a couple of weeks ago to look at the sandbox issue. Just from a review at that point in time, there's probably a few of the different deck boards that could be replaced. Fence pickets, the fence uprighted in the back. Again, you know, it's a timber park, so a lot of it we can do in-house. But I would say it'd be a lot of odds and ends and, you know, no major reconstruction, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, that does. That's helpful.
I spent about an hour there with my eight-year-old this past weekend. And I'd actually say a lot of the things that maybe a couple of months ago throughout the winter looked worn down. So a lot of things have actually been replaced, it seems recently, some chains, some thing. And so my daughter was able to get around the whole park. It was great. You know, I think the challenge with it, like you said, it's timber, that it looks older, that it, that it looks a certain way. And that's hard to deal with, but functionally, my daughter had a great time and there was a bunch of kids there. And, you know, I, I think we also want to make sure that, one thing I've noticed is that our basketball courts are getting the love that they need. They are used heavily, whether it be at Lurbur Downing or at Waddell, I, I mean, at Brewbaker. So if, if our basketball courts, if there's ever need, you know, to take a look at them and if they need resurfaced. I don't know, you know, we need so many things resurfaced, but that was very nice at Waddell when that was done as part of the project. Because it really helped that court out.
Well, what I'm hearing is that there's an interest in doing something in recreation, whether it's Jordan Point Park or other parks. If we took 60,000 from that 133,000, we still have about $73,000. Would city council want us to explore other projects at Jordan's Point Park and provide you a list of what we could do? Put together a plan for some of the improvements. Of course, they'd be minor with only 73,000. Some of the improvements that could be made to the other parks, would that be what I'm hearing you'd like us to pursue?
Jim, I'm going to tell you, resounding yes. And just from a, you know, process standpoint, one of the things I hope I've mentioned and I'll echo is that the idea of budgeting excess revenue is not something that this council's accustomed to in our previous processes, not good or bad, just not used to. And I, I can assure you, we can easily find ways to spend money on different projects, almost like the earmarks with our friends in the federal government, if we can tap into the, the the, the vault of cash. But I would tell you, my preference and I hope council would support is that from throughout the year and, and your experiences with Jeff and, and other staff, that you've got a good handle on projects around town that really need to be addressed. Whether it be the sandbox at Kids Place, which was a crisis, I think, within the past 30 days, which has been lowered from a major crisis to just a minor crisis perhaps. And, and let us know those dollar amounts and make a recommendation for those things. Because, you know, we, we could spend a million dollars happily at Jordan's Point, making it the cat's meow, resurfacing all the basketball courts. One way to become, or, or become not the worst skate park in the state of Virginia is not to have a skate park at all, just an idea, an observation. But I would love for the staff, again, with the things that you're hearing from your perspective and boots on the ground. Jeff, your guys going around taking care of these things, what needs attention from that standpoint? Because we'll always bend your ear and let you know pet projects, especially when we hear from the, the mama bears whose child just scraped their knee or something of that nature.
I'll be happy to include that in the parks budget and we can make some recommendations if that's the desire of city council.
I'd like to comment on Jordan Point. We spent the money for the plan. And the plan presumably has parts of it that could be implemented. And I saw the list of the hierarchy of things. I think we should put some effort towards Jordan's Point. That's a key area right next to the river. I think it's a great place for families, picnic area included. And I want to put my vote in for doing Jordan's Point short term.
I would too. And, and on top of that, when we had our meetings and did surveys, we included the students in the schools. And it sends a particular message if we encourage them to participate in civic dialogue and then we turn around and not do anything with the, the things that they came up with. You know, that, that does not bode well. So I would think that there needs to be some focus on how we are going to make some things happen at, at the point.
But put our money where our mouth is.
So you're, you're talking about taking the 54,000 that is in the budget and, and doubling that or? I'm totally for that. You're right. Charles makes a great point. We spent 74,999 on a plan and we need to now implement, start implementing the suggestions with all of the meetings that we had as a community. That's a great point, but I'd still like to have staff put forth some of the the suggestions that can be done, whether some things can be done in-house or what makes sense long-term. So we don't do project A that should have been done later or messed something up that's down, down the road. I, I just want to do, be very smart in our, in our projects. And not, sorry, but not stand in the way of people using Jordan's Point Park this summer or, or something that we, that we be strategic on when we do projects also, because I'll tell you, it's used a lot.
Well, again, I'd be happy to work with staff and take that additional funding, put it into parks funding, come back with a recommended project list that we could then run by city council and, and then go ahead and make those improvements or do that maintenance.
Sounds good.
Mr. Mayor, those are the only issues that Jake and I had. So I guess general questions from city council now will, if, if you will, we'll try and feel those as well.
Certainly. And members of council have any specific questions for city manager and budget director? Finance director?
I've got a question about the truck that we purchased for recycling as another year goes by. Just that it, that I, I just feel compelled to bring that up since it costs a significant amount of money and is not being used.
Jeff, I'm going to point the finger at you. I think I asked you to look at that.
Yeah, last we discussed, we were going to possibly put that on gov deals. We have not done that to date. If that's everybody's final decision, we can, we can gladly proceed with that.
Well, we're not going to use it anymore for recycling. So I, I think David's right. We want to get rid of it while it still has value.
But I'd like to think in, pick on David's terms, we want to make a smart decision. If there's any likelihood that we're going back to curbside recycling in the next three to five years, I'd really love to know what we would anticipate on gov deals, not just dump it for the sake of dumping it. Because if we're going to need one in three to five years, what can, what use can we make of it or, or does it hopefully make sense? We trust your professional opinion from that standpoint and not looking for an answer now. But I think that needs to go into the equation in, in looking at the future of recycling. And if it, single stream is likely dead and gone for the next five to 10 years, I think that makes, has a significant impact, but would love to know your thoughts, consulting with Scott and, and the team on what the future of recycling is.
I don't have the crystal ball on that. Yeah, I under, I understand your point. We won't get nearly as, as much as we'd like to get for it if we have to purchase another one in three to five years. I'd have to get some intel on what we think we can get for the truck realistically, and I can report that to the city manager and we can discuss it further. But as far as what the market's going to do, I, I really don't have any idea, nothing insightful to add to this discussion tonight.
Thank you.
Does it have any value in, in, in regular trash pickup of any type? Since it does lift up those cans we purchased.
I've asked that question and not really, Leslie. It's, you know, it's a two-compartment truck and it only listed so much. So, and didn't have that big a bin in it to begin with. It was fine for a little co-mingle that we had. But as far as any real use, if we put, you know, we have put down recycling, we continue to not do it. It'd probably just languish in our yard, to be honest.
Okay, thanks.
Don't want any West Virginia yard art.
I'm obviously inclined to defer to staff on recommendations because I like having a vehicle replacement plan. But for the sake of conversation, the, the pickup truck, the police pickup truck slated for replacement, it has about 50,000 miles on it. But it's also nine, 10 years old. So it, it's getting up there in age and there's maintenance issues and so on. But, and I know that we have to have a pickup truck for the police department, animal control and so on. But one of the reasons that we might have it be getting a new one is for towing a, a police trailer. And I just mentioned, could one of the SUVs tow? And I just mentioned, could one of the SUVs tow the trailer? Could, you know, is there another way to tow a trailer? Do we need to buy a new pickup truck for fifty thousand dollars to tow a trailer? Or can the existing pickup truck, I don't know, continue to, to, to serve its function within our two and a half miles, you know, square mile city?
My understanding from Mike Frost is that yes, the current truck can pull that trailer. That's how it's getting around now. But as you say, the, the truck itself is aging. More problems will probably develop. And the truck doesn't perform real well on some of the hills and some of the areas we'd like to get that trailer into from time to time. It just doesn't have quite that power apparently that a newer truck would have. I can't give you more specifics than that, but that was part of the request. And the other issue I guess is practically speaking, we're going to buy a new pickup truck sometime. If we buy it in two years, we buy it this year, we're not saving any money per se, we're just getting improved performance in the next two years. And some, and some additional value out of the truck itself. So I'm not sure we really actually save anything. We just delay the purchase. One way of looking at it, I'm not, I'm not trying to lobby either way, but that's, you know, from a CIP or equipment replacement fund standpoint, you know, pushing it back another two years leaves the expense on the books. It's still there.
Do we repurpose?
For staff, we have a replacement plan. So I, but I just wanted to be full transparency. I've tracked the mileage on all the vehicles we've replaced since twenty fourteen and fifty thousand miles. For a pickup truck, Public Works usually gets a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five thousand miles out of a pickup truck. And there's, those are very heavily used. And I know there's, the police one is a Chevy and Public Works has. But I just, I bring that up just in the interest of full transparency in, in the spending of dollars.
Well, what, what happens to the truck then? Is it repurposed? Is it used by Public Works or another department or do we sell it or?
I have to defer to those who have sold more equipment than I have. As Jeff said, oftentimes we put things on gov deals. Sometimes we do. Like the schools wants one of the SUVs. I believe that the fire department is going to replace this year. So sometimes we do repurpose it to something like the schools. I haven't heard that they need a pickup truck at this point. Jake or Jeff, do you, do you need to correct me on that?
Yeah, I haven't heard of any, I know Central Dispatch was initially interested in the pickup, but ultimately decided it wasn't big enough or didn't have exactly the specs they needed and wasn't going to work out. So they're no longer interested in it. And, you know, the truck is going on 10 years old, but it is still relatively lower mileage, only being fifty thousand miles. So I would suggest, you know, putting it on gov deals and, and, you know, salvaging it as surplus property may have the best value for us right now rather than transferring it to another department, unless there's a specific and, you know, very dire need. But I think we would get good value for the truck right now as, as surplus property.
A ten-year-old fifty thousand mile pickup truck kind of sounds like a cream puff to me. I think it would have good value, a good resale. I think there would be demand for it. Also, you know, if there's any way at all, we could continue to use that truck. It has a lot of life left in it. Surely unless you're talking about replacing a motor, that it's more economic to do minor repairs on a truck of that nature. What kind of repairs are we talking about? Mention was made that repairs are needed. What kind of cost are we looking at so far? What's happening to it that would be a signal that we've got a, a problem?
I don't think needed is the issue. I think the expenses are increasing for maintenance. There's nothing major needed that I'm aware of or problematic with it. Just that year in, year out, as they get older, they cost more to maintain.
And I would also suggest that if the truck is undersized, it may pull the trailer. But if it's undersized for a trailer of that size, that's going to put more wear and tear on the transmission, more wear and tear on the engine over the next several years. So the value of the, the resale value of that truck may rapidly deteriorate over the next several years. So I think given its combined age and mileage, we may have a good opportunity to salvage it for good, good surplus value right now.
When we use it to pull things, what are we talking about? We're not talking about pulling it a hundred miles, are we? Are we talking about within the city?
Yeah, primarily would be in the city. I could envision, you know, and I, I don't know, I'm just speaking, you know, the, the police department may have different ideas. But, you know, it may occasionally go somewhere regionally, you know, collaborating with other law enforcement agencies in the county or Buena Vista or something of that nature. They may have some plans for hauling it outside of Lexington to that extent. But I would imagine primarily it would be within the city.
Conceptually, I think you understand that the concerns of council wanting to stretch as much as they possibly can out of all the vehicles. I think in the past, we've also had some interest, if it makes sense. And this may be an opportunity that makes sense to look at an electric vehicle because the electric trucks are pretty low maintenance, don't have to worry about the gas function and have significant pulling capability. But don't know the specs, but I, I hope at this point you get good clarity from council on their concerns that, that we're managing that process and replacement in, in a positive fashion. Relative to the, the budget that's been presented, are there additional questions of council or staff while we have the expertise here?
I had a, I have a question or two about the schools. Should I just put them in writing to share with Ms. Walters? I mean, I had a, just to have an idea on the amount of money that they're projecting to spend on virtual instruction, since it's not required by law that we pay for folks that don't want to be a part of Lexington City Schools in person. And that that would be, you know, it's again, not required by law. Are we thinking 10 people? And that might be thirty thousand or 20 students that are not our students. And that might be sixty thousand dollars of, of taxpayer dollars, just to kind of understand how many they think might be doing virtual that we'll be paying for, that we're not required to pay for. And then also to even, and again, this is really splitting hairs. But if they could, if, if those are only city students that we would do that for, or would we be paying tuition for students that may not reside within the city? But say they're city students and then we're paying their tuition with taxpayer dollars that we don't have to pay to Virtual Virginia. Just, just some questions that I had from people that follow along our meeting that, that asked about the best use of funds for folks that are essentially putting their kids in a private school and we're paying for it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I, as I recall, when Rebecca described it, what we would be paying Go Virginia or Virtual Virginia? What was the name of the company? Virtual Virginia? That, that sum was less than we received from the state for the student. And at least this year, the state was covering those costs out of, now that doesn't mean that they would do that indefinitely, but at least this year.
So you're right, there's no lost funding for FY22. So we're going to get money, I believe, Jake, correct me if I'm wrong, for six hundred and fifty-eight students.
That, that's correct. We'll, we'll, we'll get the no lost funding to get us to six fifty-six.
And, and so that is what we could use to operate our school for the kids that are attending our school, whether we pay for a student doing virtual or not. I mean, the money could be used for educating the kids within our school system. Because remember, our schools are asking for an extra hundred and fifty thousand from us. And so that, I'm just trying to wrap my mind around how many students is the schools, are they currently planning to be paying for their virtual schooling? That we don't need to, that, that money could be spent educating the students that are attending daily. Just, just a question.
Theoretically, David, if I'm understanding your question from a management standpoint, the school board is declaring that they're choosing to spend, let's say the figure is fifty thousand dollars for virtual learning is what they're budgeting. They're asking us for an additional one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Fifty thousand of that could be for the virtual learning. If they, if we didn't fund the full hundred and fifty, then they may not have the funds to fund the virtual learning. And that's really your question. The challenge for city council is whether or not to approve what the schools are requesting. How they spend it is up to the school board. And if they're choosing, it's, you're right, and every taxpayer's right to know how they're spending it. So again, boiling down my question, what I perceive your question to be of staff to take back to the school board is what are they budgeting for Virtual Virginia instruction, period? Because any, any student that is enrolled in Lexington City Schools is a Lexington City School student. We delineate and some people pay tuition, but they're all our students. Did we lose Leslie? No, she's, okay.
If it helps, I think Rebecca intimated that there would be, she, she believed it would be ten to twelve is what she thought, as I recall. But I mean, that could be, and that was just an estimate on her part.
But it's a very fair question and I'd love to know what, what they're budgeting specifically. Because you get some things merged there. It's only going to cost, you know, three thousand and that's less than what we get from the state. That you're robbing Peter to pay Paul, perhaps, if you're going to spend thirty-six thousand dollars on 12 students. That's an interesting.
It may also be true that, that, that the city is obligated by the state to provide remote learning opportunities, particularly in this environment this year, I, I would, you don't think so? Okay.
Not in FY22, I don't believe. That's not the law.
I think I asked that question when we had the, the meeting with, with Rebecca and them and all, about whether virtual was required for 2122. And I, I believe she said, no, it wasn't. But the, the bill went through several iterations on what was required and what was not. But with Virtual Virginia and making accommodations for those students who qualify. And I think that was part of the rub was, you know, how many students are going to qualify for virtual instruction? Because of, you know, having personal experience with that type of instruction. It's, it's a big hurdle for, for quite a few of them that don't succeed in, with that type of, of education.
And it's pretty rugged for the instructors, the teachers as well.
Yeah, it is.
Well, I'll be happy.
Frank summarized my question really well. Just how many kids are they budgeting for Virtual Virginia? That was a great way to.
And how much?
Yep, that was great.
I'll be happy to go to Rebecca and ask her that. Jake, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the funding for that actually is coming from their third round of CARES funding. Is that not correct, Jake? Because I think there was technology was part of that equation.
I believe from their presentation, they are going to fund this through the ESTER three funding that they're slated to receive, which is from the American Rescue Plan.
Okay.
They, they did say that, but I still consider that our money that we could spend on then the school system.
She also said that, that those funds, at least some percentage, it might've been 20%, had to go to distance learning. There, there was some, anyway, Rebecca could probably answer this better than I, but, but it sounded to me like that, that we had to provide some distance learning. So.
Well, while we have the worst skate park in the Commonwealth, perhaps we're the only school system not providing virtual learning if we eliminated it. Just kidding.
Now, I think Dennis is actually right. He makes a good point. So I think, I'm sure Rebecca can clear it up for me. But Dennis, I think was exactly right that some percentage did need to be spent on that. So thanks, Jim. Thanks, Dennis.
We'll get you more information.
I have a comment about something that I brought up at the last meeting when I asked the question about solar and the Lower and Downing Solar Plan. Rebecca Walters sent to all of us, by way of the city manager, the numbers for the 20-year agreement that exists between the city or the school system and Secure Futures. And I looked at it and when you look at that sheet, it shows that after 20 years, that basically it's a break even. I'd commented in an email that, you know, there was a benefit from it. And that is it didn't use fossil fuel. But, but in looking at the numbers a little closer, I have another question. And, and looking at the numbers, there is, and, and the agreement, you know, this is being a Monday morning quarterback, looking at the agreement, my sense is when solar panels are installed, that they're going to produce, as long as the sun is shining, electricity. And the cost that the electricity has coming from the solar panels only, it should be a fixed number. The amount in the set of numbers in the spreadsheet shows an escalating cost for money paid to Secure Futures. And if, after three years, that number had been capped at whatever the current rate was that the city would pay to Dominion, I calculated that we would have ended up with a seventy thousand dollar surplus, not a zero or slightly less. And I was wondering how that contract would go in terms of having steadily escalating amount set to the power, to pay for the power that those solar panels produce. It just strikes me that that amount wouldn't change. The solar panel is a fixed cost. Once it's installed and the electricity shouldn't be a variable amount coming off of it.
Well, it, it wouldn't be a variable amount of kilowatt. But, but it would, the amount that Dominion would pay the solar company for, for that energy might vary. I, I mean, it, it, you know, I mean, if Dominion pays you less for solar energy, then, then it would, it would have an effect. I, I don't know if that's, that's the problem. But I, I, I think it's, it, it's not fair to go back and relitigate a five-year or five or six-year-old contract. So I, you, you know, this is the contract that they have. I don't know how they got into this particular contract. At the time, you know, the focus was on carbon, you know, becoming, offsetting your carbon use. And so, you know, if that was the goal, then, then maybe that was the focus. Now, for the courthouse, for instance, this is, this has come up because this particular company is the company that, 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 that at least initially has expressed an interest in offering a proposal. So, but I can tell you that I'm sure the county and I know we would not be interested in any proposal that didn't actually save us money. I mean, it would be nice to, to, to get solar and offset the carbon. But obviously the ultimate goal is to save money for the city and county.
Well, based on the experience at Lower and Downing, I think we could use that as a learning tool on what types of things should be in the new contract, if there is going to be a new contract. You know, it's, it's, it's one thing to say, yes, we're going to do this. But it's another thing to truly understand what it is that you bought into. And the experience factor with Lower and Downing, I think is very telling.
This is Les, like my video camera is not working. So, and, and I was on school board at the time when we did this. Actually voted against it, not because it was a bad proposal, but it wasn't going to make us any money. And everybody knew it wasn't going to make us any money. There were some assumptions in there about Dominion relating to, about the Dominion charges continuing to go up. And that was the comparative cost is what we would be paying for regular electricity. And that wasn't, I didn't think that was a valid assumption. It wasn't. But again, it all went back to, we were more interested in it from an educational standpoint. However, the one thing that really does concern me was that there was not supposed to be any puncturing of the roof or anything that could affect our warranty. So if you're looking at this for the courthouse, that, the, any kind of roof penetrations, that, that's what would concern me and.
Yeah, and, and I believe, and I'm sure the county would be very concerned about that. And because it's their roof, I, I don't know our responsibility in terms of. So, so anyway, I, I, I spoke with Spencer, he's going to look at it and figure if, if, if they want to move forward on it. But I'll give you a post.
And again, that, that's a decision that county, it's their building, so they will make that decision. The opportunity perhaps for us or for our school system, it, it remains at Waddell. If we wanted to look at something or certainly encourage this, the school division to look at potential for Waddell.
Well, I would, I would say yes to encourage school division to look at it, particularly knowing what our experience has been with Lower and Downing. And in negotiating any contract, we certainly would be able to benefit from that experience.
But so you're saying to discount the fact that they, the schools had two major concerns about going near the Waddell roof since it's not made for solar because it's metal?
No, I'm, I'm suggesting that that would, that would be something, that would be a separate decision to consider. I'm just suggesting that if it gets to the point that the, the numbers look good, then the idea that there would be an escalating amount assigned to the value of the power that the school uses is in question. It seems to me as though it ought to be a fixed item, not a variable item. Had it been a fixed item, my calculations show we would have benefited at the end of the 20-year agreement to the tune of approximately $70,000, not zero.
But the way I took the school's email was, this is a dead issue. It doesn't make.
For them, right.
And it hurts the building and, and could damage the building immediately and, and cause thousands of dollars worth of repairs. So I, I, I don't, we're not asking the school board to do anything, right?
That's right.
Right.
All right, got two big booklets that Jenny put together for us with a lot of numbers. Anything else in those that folks want to talk about? Jeff, I had just one question, I guess made for you and Jake, and this is just a reminder. If I recall accurately, there are some things that are just staples of our budget. One being, I think it's $50,000 a year that we earmark for sidewalks for repairs generally throughout the city. Is that accurate?
Believe it's 35,000.
35, okay. And in downtown beautification, 25,000 that typically Main Street Lexington will tap into for different projects that they have. And it, it's also my expectation that Jeff dutifully spends at least 35,000 each year because there's plenty of sidewalk needs, there's more money and time or, or worst enemies. The 25,000 for Main Street Lexington, that doesn't typically get exhausted every year, does it?
I don't believe so, I'd have to go back and check. There may be some remaining balances on that funding each year. I don't, I don't believe it all gets expended each year.
Okay, if you could check and let us know what has accumulated there, for instance, would be terrific. And would encourage folks when, or well, there was a, to Mr. Alligood's point, we spend money on studies and we don't always follow the studies. There were a lot of interesting details with that Main Street or downtown beautification plan, many of which the, the council really wasn't in support of and has not implemented. But there were lots of low-hanging fruit that folks have begun to, Main Street Lexington has begun to incorporate. So just encourage members of council, if you don't have that, contact the city manager and get that, that report. It's probably seven or eight years old at this point, but still, still good material. Hopefully, my perception is Main Street Lexington is using that as, as a guide for projects that they're working on.
They are, that is true.
So find out to see your face, Leslie, and have you chime in.
Yeah, I'm sorry, and this is my tablet from city council and the camera just went out, so I don't know what's going on.
I have a question for Jeff with regard to paving. I noticed on Enfield Road that there is a bunch of what looks like preparation types of things happening. Is Enfield Road going to be paved prior to the Gaskins Water Tower development?
It's not on the page scheduled this year. Where, what you witness us doing is we're test pitting for gas, water and sewer because we're looking at running 15-inch storm sewer up the edge of Enfield Road to intercept the current CDI just below Patrick Ramy's old house that discharges onto the cave property without a drainage easement. When last year, when we put the new 24-inch culvert under Enfield Road down near the intersection with Lime Kiln, we had stubbed out for this project. So we're hoping to get that going in the next probably two to three weeks.
The reason I ask is my neighbors have commented about the deteriorating condition of Enfield Road and wondering what was happening. Dodging.
Yes, sir.
Dodging holes.
Funding permitting, we maybe get it on the schedule next year.
Thank you.
Great conversation and wonderful questions. Members of council, have any additional questions? I'm going to take that as a no. Thank you, staff, for your time and talents in bringing forward the budget. Big takeaway tonight is looking at bumping up compensation to 3%, which we anticipate would cost about $60,000 and look forward to that modification in the proposed budget for the coming fiscal year. Other details obviously, but that to me is a highlight and staff coming back with some recommended projects, specifically at Jordan's Point, or if there's some other items in the city that maybe staff feels may be more pressing, we, we are eyes and ears open. But, but nothing else to come before us, Jim? Any other by-the-ways update way of counsel or all smooth sailing at this point? You're, you're muted, Jim.
Waters are not too rough right now, so I guess it's maybe not smooth sailing, but we're doing well. Of course, we're going to schedule this for, and the CIP for approval, I think on May 6th, is that not right, Jake?
That's correct, yeah, we're going to schedule the budget and CIP to be approved at the May 6th meeting.
Very good. No other business to come regarding budget, we will stand adjourned and thank you all and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you to whomever was hosting.
That's me.
Jake, good work, appreciate it.
No problem, thanks.
Good evening and thanks all.